Pastor Whit, would you give us an indication?
Sure, I can. Let us pray, please. As we celebrate this Thanksgiving week, we are grateful, Lord, for your blessings on us, blessings on this country, and we thank you, Lord. We're grateful that we're able to serve our community and our city, bless our time together, and continues to give us the wisdom we need, Lord, as we move ahead on these items that are before us. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Bob and Serby.
Here.
Barbara Craig.
Here.
Russ Winn.
Here.
Chairman Carlander.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Roger Brunswick.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Roll call.
Bob and Serby.
Here.
Barbara Craig.
Yes.
Russ Winn.
Yes.
Chairman Carlander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick. James Worser.
Yes.
Let me sit here.
So at this point, we ask for any public comment? Hearing none.
We'll proceed to the public hearing. The case name is Popeye's Benita Springs, and it's a conventional rezoning case.
Can I ask at the point of order, A, B, and C are all tied to one case, and the staff report, you know, reiterates the same things. So do you want to do them all separately, or do you want to do it all at one time and make the different points?
Well, I think, counsel...
I have no objection to a single unified presentation. It's the applicant's burden if that makes it easier for the board to follow along. I have absolutely no objections to that.
Thank you, counsel.
And then, but each successive vote and each successive item would be taken on its own criteria, and we can decide how to do that after the applicant's gone forward.
No, I agree with Mr. Rooney that each one has their own different criteria, but a lot of factual background is the same.
So counsel, before we begin, so you're satisfied with that? That's okay with you? That we proceed that way?
Yeah, I was merely asking what your pleasure was. I mean, we don't want to bore you guys.
I have a process question for you.
Okay.
I actually have two questions, if I may. First, you had asked that you meet ex parte with the board members. What were you, I'm curious, legitimately curious, what were you hoping to accomplish by meeting individually that you could not accomplish here in the room?
The rules allow for it. You have an ordinance that permits it. Everyone's declined. Sometimes people are more inclined to ask questions when not in a public forum, and so wanting to be able to respond to any questions you might have that you might not be as comfortable about asking in a public format.
My second question is both for you and for our counsel. What do the canons of professional ethics say about direct communications from an attorney with an opposing or different client without first going through our attorney? Is that a permitted thing under the canons of professional ethics in Florida?
I do hope that you don't consider this board an opposing party. This board's supposed to be a neutral party.
We are a neutral party.
And I do know that you all take public from the input, which is from the public and other people when you're out and about, so it's no different. The applicant should have the right, same right, to have discussions with you folks on an ex parte basis that the general public has.
There is no question about that, but the question I was asking, so I would not have a question if the client came to us and asked for individual meetings, I think. But my question is different. My question is, do you, as an attorney, have the right to bypass our counsel? And I'm asking that legitimately. I don't know what the answer is.
Your ordinance allows ex parte communication doesn't require notification to the city's attorney.
Counsel, could you, I'd like to hear from you on that.
Well, the Florida bar has provided an ethics opinion on for adverse matters. It's absolutely clear that Neil would have to come through me. We have talked separately recently about some communication issues, and we've agreed that going forward, it's clear that whenever she reaches out to staff at certain levels with the boards or the council, that she will at least contact me and let me know, and if I have an objection, I can raise it at that time.
Thank you. Okay, why don't you proceed now? That's good answers.
It's the applicant's burden, but is, I'm going to swear in, are all witnesses for the applicant?
You want us to stand up, or?
You can stand up, just raise your right hand. You don't have to. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And thank you. And when you come to the podium to speak, go ahead and just indicate that you have been sworn for the court reporters.
Correct.
My next question is, did you want me to stand at the podium? Because then I'm going to look at you all sideways.
Whatever you want. We're comfortable.
I kind of like to look at you. I lip reads, though it helps me, if that's okay?
Whatever you want.
Okay, great.
We're comfortable. Thank you very much.
For the record, my name is Neil Montgomery, and as noted, we're here for a rezoning to a standard district, a special exception, and a variance. And despite the fact that there's a lot of paper here, there are a lot of things we agree with the staff on. There basically is a few minor points that we don't agree on. With me today is Mr. Royal. He's the applicant. I'm Neil Montgomery. Wayne Arnold is our expert planner, who will be providing expert testimony. Mike Herrera is the engineer who's worked on this project and the traffic consultant. Norm Trubilcock is an expert in traffic consultation. He's here as well. The property, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. If you go out the front door here, make a left, make a left on 41. The property is bounded on three sides by roadways, US 41, and Beaumont east-west and Beaumont north-south. I want you to take note of the fact that this property does not have direct access to US 41, and also take note that there is an existing building, existing development, and existing access, and existing buffers, because I think that's an important point. As you know, the first thing you have to do is determine whether or not the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The COM Plan is the godfather of planning, and Wayne will elaborate on this later, but and the staff and the applicant agree that all three requests are consistent with the COM Plan, but there's some things in there I want to make note of. If you read the lead-in paragraph, it indicates that this designation recognizes, but it's not limited to, properties that have been developed and have received development approval. This property, as we just saw, has been and is developed, and so this category was created in large part to recognize the right to have commercial on properties that are already developed. If you read paragraph A, it says appropriate uses include a wide range of commercial, retail, and service uses for both residents and visitors. So obviously, the request today is for fast food. Fast food obviously is a use that serves both residents and visitors. So clearly, this location under the comprehensive plan is appropriate for this use. Where the issue really comes in is ordinance 15-27, which I believe is in the back of your package. This language comes from the codified version in the LDC, and it talks about the purpose and intent of this overlay, and the whole ordinance needs to be read in conjunction with purpose and intent. So this is important. The intent of the US 41 overlay is to guide future growth and development along US 41 in a manner that maintains and enhances the aesthetic's visual quality. Point one, make sufficient use of infrastructure. Point two, protect existing neighborhoods, and balances automobile-oriented development patterns with the pedestrian realm. Those are the four points that you need to determine that this request is consistent with. Now, that's important, because one area where we disagree with the staff, in the staff report, their opinion is premised largely on the fact that they submit that the purpose of the ordinance is to not have one particular use dominate the corridor. That language is not in the ordinance. This is the language that is in the ordinance. You have no right and ability to go beyond the ordinance unless the ordinance is ambiguous. I would submit the purpose and intent is very clear and not ambiguous. Aesthetics, efficient use of infrastructure, protect neighborhoods, and prevent expansion of strip commercials. Those are the four points. And if you look at the ordinance in the back, there's some whereas clauses that just explain why the ordinance was adopted, and those whereas clauses are consistent with Section One of the things that the staff notes in both the variance and in the special exception is that, in their opinion, there are no extraordinary circumstances related to this property. One of the things I think is extraordinary and important to note, this is the parcel that was zoned in 1975, so it was in the very early days of land use, and it was rezoned from AU to BU1A site location only with a stipulation that right-of-way be provided for a service road along US 41 if the need arises. Two important things about this. One, BU1A allowed restaurants, all kinds of restaurants. In 1975, there was no distinction between different kinds of restaurants. It was just restaurants, so fast food was permitted. Secondly, it required an exaction. Because this was before we developed the law, that would be illegal today for a couple reasons. One, you couldn't restrict a standard zoning district, and two, you couldn't extract property without a rational basis. But they did extract property. So that road, reverse access road you see, was dedicated as a requirement based on the 1975 zoning. Now I'm lost. Okay, no. I don't know how I got that far ahead, but I'm just going to go back and start over. Okay, now you've got to help me.
I don't know how to start over. I apologize.
That's why they don't let me have those. What you see in the lower left-hand corner is, also lets you know, this property was developed, and the frontage road was required when the property was developed as a Burger King. So this site was determined to be suitable for a fast food restaurant, was developed for the fast food restaurant, and property was taken based on the fact that it was a fast food restaurant. The Land Development Code doesn't define extraordinary circumstance, and when an ordinance doesn't define it, you allow to look for the plain meeting. So I cracked open my Blacks Law Dictionary, which defines extraordinary circumstance. It's a highly unusual set of facts that are not commonly associated with a particular thing or element. So it's a unique circumstances, and we submit, in this case, we have a property with roads on three sides, required to dedicate property, zoned for fast food, developed for fast food, which is a unique set of circumstances. Again, if you go back to the back of the book, to the actual 15-27 that was adopted, you'll see a lot of strike through and underlines. So they struck through language, they wanted to take out underlined language they wanted to add. One of the things that didn't happen was there was nothing in there that said both sets of special exception criteria don't apply, so we have two sets. And there's a point I want to make about that. If you look over to the left, that's your normal special exception. You see the word "must consider." That's mandatory. You have to look at all those elements. When you look at the overlay, it's not mandatory. It says, hey, these are things we want you to look at when you evaluate special exceptions in the corridor. So mandatory, use these to evaluate it. And that's important, because Wayne's going to kind of highlight for the fact that the staff go through all the elements that we are definitely consistent with, and we agree. And I would submit, it's almost impossible to be consistent with all of them when you look at protecting the neighborhoods and things like that.
So counselors, what you're asking us to do then, in plain language, is to ignore the statute?
I'm asking you to follow the law. I'm asking you to...
Does the law have a provision in it that says what that says on the right-hand side there?
The law has both of those. One is mandatory, you have to consider. The other one on the right says...
But the other one applies to the overlay.
Yes, and it's not...
And that's what we're dealing with, is the overlay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Right?
You have to look at both, sir.
Why is that?
Because they're both in effect.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
What you quoted as the wording here in the copy of the law that I have that was sent to me by, when I asked it from the staff, it says, "approval criteria. The following criteria will be utilized to evaluate special exception requests in the US 41 overlay."
Yes, ma'am.
"Will be" under the law is another one of those command statements, and so I don't see how you can say these are, you know, sort of criteria that are not mandatory. "Will be" is a mandatory sort of word. And the other thing that I'd like to ask, when you quoted the purpose and intent, the purpose and intent that I have in this law goes on after what you say there, to say the US 41 overlay district is intended to prevent the expansion of a strip commercial development pattern and create a physically attractive and functionally integrated built environment through cohesive and complementary site development and design standards provided therein. So that the goal of preventing a strip commercial development is quite clearly in the purpose and intent of this law. Is that not correct?
You're absolutely right, and I'm glad you pointed out that section, because that particular section says it's implemented through the site design standards that are in the ordinance. And in the staff conditions, they note that we would have to meet those site design standards, so...
Well, wouldn't you also have to meet, since it also says, "approval criteria, the following criteria will be utilized to evaluate special exceptions," and down in those criteria, number D in my copy four on yours, it says, "exceptional or extraordinary conditions exist which warrant the proposed use, including but not limited to demonstrated market demand and minimum spatial separation of 500 feet from a similar use." And that is a "will be used" mandatory thing for us to consider, right?
It says you're going to use those to evaluate, but then doesn't say that they're mandatory criteria like the ones on the left. So we need to evaluate those. When you evaluate, you evaluate it as a whole. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to...
So then, in essence, you're asking us not to apply the statute on the right?
No, that's not...
To ignore it?
No, I'm sorry. If I created that confusion, I didn't.
Please.
I didn't mean to.
Thank you.
The criteria on the left, the "must consider," are the criteria that you apply in every special exception, and you must consider all of those.
When were the criteria on the left? When was that law passed?
That law came into effect when the city adopted their Land Development Code, and those criteria actually...
Roughly the year 2000, or...
Well, no, because you still were using the county regulations in 2000. It wasn't until 2003 that the city adopted its own comprehensive plan, and then...
Fair enough.
...thereafter, you adopted the Land Development Code.
But the statute on the right was passed in 2015.
That was under the special ordinance, yes.
Right.
Now...
So aren't, isn't the more contemporary statute, doesn't the law say that we follow, if there's a conflict between the two, using your argument, that we follow the more contemporary one?
You have to actually follow both of them, because one wasn't eliminated. You have to look at both.
Can, to just carry on with your question, the end of this law under Section 3 Conflict states, "Whenever the requirements or provisions of this amending ordinance are in conflict with the requirements or provisions of any other lawfully adopted ordinance or statute, the most restrictive requirements shall apply."
Yes, the most restrictive are the mandatory ones on the left. This is a "will evaluate," so this is less restrictive. But my point is, they don't negate each other. You have to look at both. That's my point.
All right, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'd like to expand a little bit on that. When was the Burger King built, the original site?
When was the original site zoned?
No, when was the original restaurant that was there built? What year?
Mr. Arnold can address that.
I'll let Mr. Fegan. I think he knows the building records.
Mike Fegan, City of New York Springs Community Development. It was built in 1986. It's when it was built as a Burger King.
Okay, so the requirements of the 500-foot separation were not even...
Did not apply.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you say were not even codified?
No, the 500-foot separation did not apply at that time.
Were there any other questions at this time? Well, with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Arnold.
Great, thanks.
Who has previously been qualified. Yes, sir.
I just, after the Burger King folded, was there any other business since then?
Yes, a bank.
Yeah.
Okay, a bank was there. I just couldn't recall what was there afterwards. City Bank, okay.
But now we, too many people are using these to do their banking.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm a certified planner with Q Grading Minor and Associates. I was sworn in, and I've testified before the zoning board and been seen as an expert in land use matters in the City of Benita since its formation, so happy to be here and want to walk you through some of the things. And we just had a conversation about really the crux of the matter for both the variance and special exception. You have a specific overlay that was applied in 2015 that affects the subject property. I think most of us have been around long enough, we're familiar with it, probably even when it was operating as the Burger King, but the aerial that I have up here highlights the fact that the subject site is developed with about a 3,500-square-foot building. You can still see that the drive-through lane is intact. We have a parking field that meets the requirements for a fast food restaurant. We have access points that were designed and coordinated to be used for the fast food restaurant, and as Neil said, there was a requirement to mandate the frontage road that now connects to the Best of Everything and then connects on to Kentucky Fried Chicken, and that was a requirement of the zoning at the time and specifically then put in place for the Burger King restaurant. Obviously, we're familiar with what's going on in the area, but we're changing the zoning from C1A to CC. Your uses have changed in the zoning districts over time, and the C1A no longer allows for the fast food restaurant, so the CC zoning is required for that purpose. As Neil said, you're in the general commercial future land use category, and that was applied for areas of the city that were previously zoned, so you already do have strips of commercial that are designated for commercial along US 41 and primarily Benita Beach Road, and all of those are in your general commercial future land use category. It does allow multifamily residential use, but I think the predominant land use on both of those corridors is for commercial uses. This highlights the surrounding zoning, and you can see that the proposed CC zoning is consistent with the zoning to the north and to the east, and it allows a variety of uses. You can see that we don't have any residential property that's surrounding us, which is part of protection of the neighborhood, so to speak, as looking at your overlay criteria. So the zoning that we're seeking is very consistent with what's around us, and obviously staff didn't have a problem with that request. There's your general commercial category, and as Neil said, this is to satisfy both visitors and residents. So I think the expectation is that a lot of our visitors are already traversing the US 41 corridor, so obviously, having a use that has a great capture rate makes a lot of sense from our perspective. This is even a tighter version of the site, and you can clearly see that the drive-through lane is intact. Drive-through window has to be reestablished. The bank actually took out the drive-through window, but there's outdoor seating here. Frontage road is here. Of course, no direct access to US 41. And one of the, if you go back and look at the record relating to the US 41 corridor, some of the high-traffic generating uses, the discussion to include those in your special exception criteria was there because they wanted access control. They didn't want numerous access points on US 41, for instance, and in this case, there is no direct access to US 41. We're utilizing existing turn lanes and existing driveway cuts to satisfy that requirement. Again, going back to the zoning, it wasn't highlighted in Neil's presentation, but this includes part of the development order that shows you the frontage road requirement that was established that was connecting all three of these properties. They were zoned and then subsequently divided, and then the frontage road was the idea so that more traffic wasn't placed directly on US 41. So this ties to it, and if you notice, it clearly says Burger King. So this was done for that specific Burger King fast food restaurant use. This is our proposed site plan that was proposed as part of the special exception and the zoning and the variance application, and I'll go back and discuss a little bit about the variance shortly, but you can see and highlight it here, there are going to be some landscape enhancements that staff has asked us to make. They've also, because you talk about not just promoting access for vehicles, but also the pedestrian realm phrases used, they've asked us to provide sidewalk connections through the site and extend a sidewalk along Beaumont, both north and southeast and west, to connect to the sidewalk that exists in US 41, and we're happy to do that, and that's part of our proposed plan. So this again highlights the language, and as Neil pointed out, you know, we're dealing with aesthetics, we're dealing with efficient use of public infrastructure, but I would even argue that efficient use of the site. So the way I look at this, and when we first started talking about this with staff, I have an existing building, and I'm not going to say that there's absolutely no other use that can be utilized there besides a fast food restaurant, but it was designed specifically for a fast food restaurant. The retrofit in an existing building to reuse it for what it was originally designed is a very easy change. It makes a lot of sense from the standpoint of utilizing what I would call something that's sustainable. We don't have to scrape the site and start over. We don't have to leapfrog and go north of Benita Beach Road and find a site where we could then meet the 500-foot spatial separation. And so it makes a lot of sense. We're not then creating more strip commercial development. I'm already zoned commercial. I've got a building there. Could I be a standard restaurant? Maybe, but I don't even understand the distinction when you start looking at the definitions in your code of what separates a standard restaurant from a fast food restaurant.
So did city council err in 2015 when they said, "We don't want any fast food restaurants within 500 feet of each other"?
Well...
Was that an error on their part?
No, I don't know.
I'm going to answer that question. I tried to determine what the rationale for that provision was, because when you look at some of the other requirements of protecting neighborhoods and aesthetics, it doesn't have anything to do with the things in the purpose and intent, and there was no rationale for that provision that could be located on the record. I have been told anecdotally that Councilman Forbes was concerned about it because he didn't want a proliferation of access points on 41, and so a separation would reduce that proliferation. However, that was not incorporated into the ordinance, and in this case, this property doesn't have access on US 41, so if that's the underlying rationale, it doesn't run afoul of it.
So the simple answer would be the city council erred, or there's no rational basis for their action?
There was no rational basis in the record that I could find, sir, yes.
Thank you.
If I could just build on that, I don't know that I would say that council erred, but I think that we would all agree who've reviewed the language on the spatial separation. It's written not as clearly as it could have been, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But here's the definition for fast food restaurant that's up on the screen that you have, and essentially, you're a fast food restaurant if you order from a counter and get ready to consume food. So the same restaurant use can occupy the site. It's not even the drive-through component that makes it a fast food restaurant, it's whether or not the food's consumed in a ready-to-state manner, or you order at a table, for instance, and it's delivered to you to eat. That's really, to me, the biggest distinction that you have between the two, but from a functional standpoint of having a restaurant occupy the space, a standard restaurant, I can occupy there today because there's no spatial separation. I don't have another standard restaurant, per se, within 500 feet, but a fast food restaurant invokes the 500-foot spatial separation. And as Neil talked about, we have two different standards we're trying to apply, and I think we agree with staff that we're consistent with the normal special exception criteria, and I think the one area that we're struggling with, and it's, to me, the language, and when we first read this and we had conversations with Mr. Theriax's firm, Mr. Spain in his office as well, the language that we're debating has already been read into the record by Mrs. Craig, but it says, "exceptional or extraordinary conditions exist which warrant the proposed use, including but not limited to demonstrated market demand and minimum spatial separation of 500 feet from a similar use." And I look at that, and to me, that's one of the evaluation criteria. It doesn't mean that I have to be 500 feet. I can be within 200 feet, I think, the way I read that. I can be within 200 feet, I think, the way I read that, as long as I demonstrate that there's some extraordinary conditions, and there's a market demand for the use, and that I'm consistent with your criteria that you're applying for the purpose and intent.
Mr. Rooney, if I may ask you a question at this point. There's an interesting question here. The statute on the right, there's 4891, was passed in 2015.
Right.
The burden of proof to prove extraordinary or exceptional, we would look at in the intervening period between 2015 and 2018. Would that be correct? Could we go back before 2000? Or is the intent expressed in the law that the city council passed in 2015? Am I confusing, or am I clear? In other words, when we look at extraordinary and exceptional--
Right.
Do we begin our inquiry into that question in the year 2015 to look for things after the statute was passed that are extraordinary?
No. That would require, from a statutory construction perspective, that would require adding additional words.
Okay, so we could go back?
You can go back. And that's wholly consistent with, you know, a standard variance or special exception criteria, which is to look at the uniqueness of the property. The uniqueness of the property, the property's always been there. The factors that could play into that would have existed in the past.
Can I ask another question, too, because this is a legal thing? One of the clear intents of this law is to prevent the development of a strip-like commercial look to the 41 corridor. So, and the way this reads, one of the things that would make a strip-like look is a whole lot of the same kind of businesses wandering along the road. You know, fast food after fast food after fast food, or I suppose car dealer after car deal after a car dealer. So it strikes me as a rational decision on the part of the council to say that a minimum spatial separation of 500 feet from a similar use aims toward that particular goal of preventing a strip-like look to 41 corridor. Is that a reasonable--
It is a reasonable assumption that all the additional criteria, and I do agree with Ms. Montgomery, that the special exception criteria, the standard criteria, must be read together with this additional criteria. I would say that, yes, it is reasonable to assume that all of these standards are to apply to what that strip development is. Now, the intent section, you know, uses, it highlights strip without further expanding on what strip is intended to be. So the real question is, the applicant is providing their interpretation, their planners are providing their interpretation, staff will provide their own interpretation, what constitutes strip? You can read a little bit into that from the foregoing sentence about balancing automobile uses with neighborhoods, with pedestrian uses, but it doesn't actually define what strip development is. Is strip development just your standard strip mall where there's rows of parking? Is it, you know, buffered, you know, uses? You know, there's a lot of question about what strip means, and so I think that's really what you have to determine for yourself using the criteria.
In the law, when there's a question about something like that, don't you usually use the general understanding of what a strip would-- strip, what do they say exactly? So I make sure that I quote it.
Strip commercial development pattern?
So if you're going to look for a meaning of something in law, you usually look for the general usage and the general understanding of what makes something a strip-like look. I mean, where I grew up, it would be Route 1, you know, in New England. It's where on and on and on, you've got all these commercial establishments without any sort of sense of, I don't know, anything but commercial there. And at least as I understand, and this is just my understanding, the purpose of the whole overlay definition for 41 and for Benita Springs was to try to prevent that, to create more of a sense of there, there for the city of Benita Springs. So I don't think that it's, you know, left without any general idea of what they were trying to--
Yeah.
What the general goal was. It was to try to prevent that from becoming just one long corridor of that look. And these were the things they decided. I didn't pick these things out, but that these criteria were something that will be utilized, so we have to apply them when something is coming on that particular corridor and requesting to be built. And I don't see how you can read D to be anything other than a requirement set in place by the legislature, the council of our town, in the law. It doesn't seem to me to be very unclear. Spatial separation is quite a term in development that's quite understood. It's from this building to that building. I mean, it used to be used, and I looked this up, too, because that's the sort of thing that interests me. It used to be used to protect against fire. Buildings had to be so far apart to be a fire. And the words used were spatial separation to separate buildings. So I just, I don't-- I'm a little bit confused by the notion that this is just something that we could choose or not choose to apply.
I don't want to weigh in too heavily at this point, because the applicant's still going, giving their presentation. You haven't heard from staff yet. Mr. Spain has been involved in communications with the applicant. He might have his own references. So I want to hold a lot of this discussion for the end, after you've heard the case and you're trying to apply the facts as presented to the interpretations. But for purposes of moving forward, and I'm just understanding some of the language being used, you know, in statutory construction, we look at the plain language when it isn't clearly defined. When there is ambiguity, Florida law requires that you look to the interpretation that would be most favorable to the property owner, because there's a derogation of property rights limiting their property rights. Like, I would never assume that this overlay says you can't have commercial on 41.
No, it doesn't say that.
So we're not taking the extreme that strip development means no commercial the entire length. So it's somewhere in between, but I'd like to say, let's wait till we get to the conclusion of both presentations.
I suppose it's a problem, because of course, we've all read all of this.
Yeah. No, you're going to get in there.
We're getting the presentation, but we have actually read all of this, so.
And just to build on that, if I might, the language actually says, "Prevent the expansion of strip commercial." And I think that when I look at the surrounding land uses, and I'll go back to that in a moment, but I wanted to build on this 500-foot separation. Because when I look at the 500 feet, and I think when we talked initially with staff, it was perceived that you will evaluate the uses within 500 feet to help determine whether or not this did expand strip commercial development, or did it meet the other intended purposes of the ordinance? And it wasn't so that you can never have another use within 500 feet. Because you think about that, you know, not being able to have two similar uses within 500 feet and having no vehicle to get there except for a variance, and then describing those other extraordinary circumstances that go with the variance is probably nearly impossible challenge. There may be a site like this one that has some very unique circumstances to it that warrant it, but otherwise, if you're not going to allow another use within 500 feet of another similar use on US-41, you've got a big problem. You've got a big legal problem if you're the city, because if you look at this exhibit and you start looking at the corridor, I have a Dunkin' Donuts, I have a McDonald's, I have a Blackjack Pizza, I have a Taco Bell, I have a Kentucky Fried Chicken, and you've got other uses as you go farther south. And it doesn't distinguish between a standalone use. It doesn't distinguish between another use. There's a Chinese restaurant in the shopping center itself, and I've got two out parcels developed in that same planned development that still allows fast-food restaurants, but your ordinance now requires me to evaluate that. Am I creating an expansion of strip commercial? I would argue that when one of those restaurants goes dark and they've put millions of dollars into retrofitting their space to be there, their expectation is that they can lease that space out to another restaurant. But your rules, if applied, 100% to the letter, and no evaluation of the 500-foot separation and the circumstances means that nobody can reoccupy many of that space. And I'm pretty sure the restaurant owners and the shopping center owners aren't aware that that's how this is being applied to them, and I think that's a major problem going forward. And that's why I think the language as written probably should have been better clarified. Keep in mind, how do you measure the 500 feet? Is it property line to property line, door to door, business to business? It doesn't say. It does not give you any guidance on how you apply the 500-foot separation. There's no magic to 500 feet. We apply that to consumption on-premise permits from schools and libraries and churches and things like that. It does give you guidance on other criteria, how to get out of that condition, because there are exceptions to everything. Maybe I have an eight-lane road with a barrier between it, and I can't walk between two points. That may be a circumstance why that criteria shouldn't be applied to the 500-feet level for consumption on premises. And I would argue that you should be looking at all the circumstances surrounding the site when you have tried to apply the 500 feet here. I'm clearly not expanding strip commercial development in this corridor. I would argue that if you want me to go north of US-41 and north of Perkins, where there's three or four vacant lots between the river and Benita Beach Road, I might be now creating an expansion of strip commercial uses. It's designated under a comprehensive plan for commercial, and it is zoned for commercial, but when I start applying these criteria to those certain uses you've prescribed to be special exceptions, I think you may force me into creating a strip commercial if you don't look at exceptions to that by using the 500 feet as a guidance tool, not as a firm 500-foot standard that has to be applied. And that's why the variance file was applied for probably many, many months after we got into the special exception application, because staff, in talking with Mr. Theriak's firm and Mr. Spain, determined that since this is a new rule that has never been applied to a single property owner, how do we apply it? This really is a policy decision by city council on how they're going to apply the 500-foot rule.
And we are not a policymaking board. We are, we sit as a quasi-judicial, neutral party.
Understood, and you make a recommendation.
But you're asking us, are you not, to overrule the city council--
No.
--without hearing any advice from them?
No, sir.
They passed the statute.
We are here today, we're asking for a change in the zoning, which the staff agrees with. We are here requesting, even what we're submitting is, we don't think that 500 foot is the hard and fast rule. But because it's debatable, and based on what Mr. Arnold said, that it's not clear, we've requested a variance from that provision. Should it be determined, it does apply. And Mr. Arnold's going to go through the variance criteria to show that we meet those, plus we've requested the special exceptions required by the ordinance. So we're not asking you to do anything negative in regards to the city council.
So, one of the market demand was one of the requirements under that same paragraph. It says, "Exceptional or extraordinary conditions which warrant the proposed use, including but not limited to demonstrated market demand and minimum spatial separation." Well, our client holds, is a franchisee for Popeyes. Popeyes has approved the site. It meets their traffic volume requirements. They want to be near other fast-food restaurants. They capture trips that are on high-volume roads. And if you look at this exhibit, 22 miles to the nearest Popeyes Fried Chicken, that happens to be in Fort Myers, there's another one in the town of Amokale, and there's another one that's in Lehigh Acres. And so I think that we're clearly more than 22 miles from another. I think the market demand clearly can be shown here, and our client's here to testify to that, if in fact you want to hear that.
Can I just ask a question? Are those three other Popeye restaurants, or are there chicken?
They are Popeyes.
They are Popeyes, okay, thanks.
This shows just the spatial separation from neighborhoods. Spanish Wells to the east, we're over 1,000 feet to the Spanish Wells community, separated by a shopping center. We're over 700 feet to Windsor Avenue, which has residential development on it that's behind the funeral home and Comcast cell tower and a shopping center. So clearly, this doesn't take away from an existing neighborhood, which was one of your other intent and purpose sections for the overlay.
Let's stay with that a second, Mr. Arnold, if I could ask you a question.
Sure.
In the overlay, it does say, "Can't be injurious to the neighborhood," and the purpose and intent talks about protecting residential neighborhoods. Given the, what is it that, between the residential and this site?
Well, the closest residential is about 700 feet away over on Windsor Road, and that, I believe, is part of a preserve that was part of St. Leo's Catholic Church campus, immediately west of us. But you have the church campus south, and then you have other commercial uses that separate this property from the nearest residential. But I would argue that you have a Wendy's in place, you have a Taco Bell, you have other fast-food restaurants that are to the same proximity to residential, and they don't seem to be a bother to somebody 700 feet away.
I'd just like to point out something here. When you're doing your separation measurements here, you're going property line to property line? Is that what it requires in the--
The code doesn't specify that.
Okay, so that you were able to come up with a reasonable way to measure a spatial separation from something else property to property line here, yes?
I could have used property line, property line. I could have used building to building. I don't think it matters from this purpose. This was related to whether or not we created injury to an existing neighborhood, and I would submit that we do not. So, one of the other things that Neil talked about is the variance application that came along later. And there are some findings that you and council have to make with regard to the variances. And the first one, we get, again, to exceptional and extraordinary conditions or circumstances inherent to the property in question. And again, I go back to, I don't think you're going to find another site in Benita Springs that is as unique as this one in that it was originally developed for a fast-food restaurant. Right-of-way was granted for the restaurant use as a frontage road. Other access points, drive-through lanes, et cetera, have been established for that use and are still in effect and able to be utilized on the property. So, we believe that that is an exceptional circumstance. I have three roads that I front. I don't access US-41 directly because of the frontage road that was granted when the Burger King was developed. And I believe we're consistent with the intent and purpose of the overlay that's related through this mechanism to get there. And we talked about all of these early on in the process, and I think that, you know, I don't know if Mr. Spain is on the phone or not, but we did have a conversation with Mr. Spain of the Theriak and Spain law firm that represents the city. And we've, of course, had many conversations with staff about this. And I think that, you know, if you can't find that this site has these unique and extraordinary circumstances, I'm not sure you're ever going to find another one. And I really would be concerned if I'm McDonald's or Wendy's or any of the other fast-food restaurants that are on this corridor today, if there's no mechanism to move forward. If for some reason, they're destroyed by a fire, or they're, you know, a hurricane comes along and takes them down. I mean, that's a major investment that we have all made in these properties, to have no avenue forward. And I think that it's not our job to rewrite the code. It's obviously our job to try to apply the code to the best we can. But I'm of the opinion, in reading this, and I'm not their lawyer, but I've read a lot of codes, that when you have a rule like this, and it says, "It's including but not limited to," that's not your only factor of 500 feet. And that's why I think there's room to say that 200 feet in this case, because it's an existing building that was designed for this specific use we're requesting, is okay, and that I might not even need to go to the variance route. But if I do, those same extraordinary circumstances that we described in the special exception should apply here for the variance as well.
Let me interrupt you a minute, Mr. Arnold. If I read the plain meaning from Black's Law Dictionary, "An extraordinary circumstance is the highly unusual set of facts that are not commonly associated with a particular thing or event." You're very familiar with Benita Springs. How long have you been working in Benita Springs?
I'm sorry, how long have you been--
How long have you been working in Benita Springs?
I've been working in Benita Springs since its inception as a city and before that.
And are you familiar with various properties up and down US-41?
Yes, I'd say I'm fairly familiar with most of the properties in Benita Springs.
So, to your knowledge, is there another parcel that was zoned in 1975 for a restaurant, developed as a restaurant, dedicated right-of-way because it was a fast-food restaurant, and is seeking, has an existing building suitable for a restaurant that doesn't need major modifications or isn't really a new or an expansion? In your expert opinion, are all those facts and circumstances you outline exceptional or extraordinary conditions?
I think they are exceptional circumstances, and I also, I would call them unique. I mean, that's kind of another way for me to say extraordinary. I think it is a unique circumstance that I believe that applies to this property. I don't think you've opened up Pandora's box, because I think another person in would have an extremely hard time explaining to you that their use was designed, built, and utilized for the same use that we're asking for, and that all the same components remain in place to go back and utilize it for that purpose, and that dedicated right-of-way for that purpose. So I don't think you'll find another site in Benita that meets this criteria.
And does that also include the fact that there are roads on three sides, and no access to 41, which limits other uses you might put on the property?
Well, it does, and obviously, there was a bank that in the interim period came along and utilized it, and for whatever reason, that bank failed. But when I look at this from an access standpoint, and the way the site is designed, and the way the circulation is designed, and the way the drive-through lane is designed, its function is clearly there for a fast-food restaurant, and probably much better suited for a restaurant than a bank.
And I'm assuming you've visited the site as well?
I have been on the property several times.
And unlike a new site where we plant somewhat skinny trees, this property, due to the frontage road, isn't right on 41, and it does have existing vegetation, does it not?
The site does have existing vegetation. Staff wants to work with us to do a betterment plan if you decide to recommend approval, that they're recommending that you-- that they're recommending that you include those conditions of approval for the special exception. But these are some photographs. You all, you as the city, I should say, took on some additional landscaping that was a component of your overlay, and you planted essentially two rows of landscaping on, on US 41 that applies to almost every property along US 41. So the landscaping that exists is fairly mature. The site on, the slide on the lower right shows you some of the mature trees and vegetation that exists on the site itself, and then, of course, the hedge. It's a, it's a challenge. We, we can't maintain the hedge on US 41. It's in the public domain. Excuse me. But that hedge is approaching six feet in places, which makes it kind of tough if you're sitting in a car to actually be able to see that. There is a pylon sign that exists that, that would elevate a sign above the landscaping, which makes sense, and that's, you know, another good design theme and part of the aesthetics that goes towards your overlay ordinance. You have good landscaping in place, you've got new sign controls in place, and obviously you have use controls in place. But we think when you read all the parts together, we are consistent with your purpose and intent, and think that you have ample room to approve the proposed request for special exception and the variance.
Yes, let me go back to the, the other variance criteria. You've already addressed exceptional or extraordinary conditions or circumstances, and obviously none of those are, the applicants don't make them correct?
No, not this particular applicant. Those, those circumstances have existed since the property was originally zoned and, and established for that use.
And is the variance that we're requesting the minimum variance?
It is. Obviously, our nearest fast food similar use is the, the Wendy's that's across Beaumont, so we have asked to be considered within 200 feet of that use.
And you've already pointed out, you know, that there's a significant buffer and distance between this property and the closest neighborhood. Do you have an opinion as to whether or not the granting of the variance will be injurious to the neighborhood?
In my opinion, it's not. I mean, if the neighborhood extends over to the residential communities, those are 700 feet plus away, and there are other commercial uses intervening between us, so no, we wouldn't be injurious to that neighborhood, and obviously, from a commercial standpoint, the use is not injurious to the other uses that are adjacent and nearby us.
And then the last point is, is the condition or situation of this property is different, you know, from, and it's not something that would recur in other, you made a distinction between this property and the ones across from Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, this site is unique, and that's, and that's part of the reason we think we meet your variance criteria. It is specific to this piece of property. I don't think you're going to find these same sets of circumstances if you look even across the street. But like I said, if, if you cannot replace a use within 500 feet of another similar use, that's a much larger city problem than, that we're discussing here today. And I, in my opinion, you know, that's why we have these criteria to apply them fairly. We have, we had submitted some elevation drawings to the city as well. I'm not going to highlight those, but it just shows it's basically putting up new signage awnings and some architectural embellishments on the existing building that's there. It doesn't require major renovations, knock-down walls, and, and new construction. It's very much a reuse of the property, and again, not expanding on the, the strip nature of development that's already occurred in and around the US 41 corridor.
And will that building elevation have to be reviewed by the staff?
Yes, that will go through Mr. Benson's review when they come in for building plans for the renovation.
Mr. Arnold, did you get a chance to review the staff recommendation on the change in the zoning from C-1A to CC?
Yes, we, we concur. I mean, the, the major distinction, a lot of the same uses are applied, but C-1A is one of your old zoning districts. You can't now zone property to C-1A. CC is the closest zoning that gets us to the, the uses that are most comparable to what would be permitted there today.
And the staff, when they looked at the criteria regarding buildings, if I could ask you to turn to the overlay special exception criteria. Talks about protecting and enhancing view sheds from US 41. Do you have an opinion as to whether or not the buffer, as it exists and as it must be enhanced, will protect the view sheds from 41?
I do, and I think it's not just the view shed of the, the existing landscaping, but there are additional building perimeter landscaping requirements, there are signage requirements. Obviously, the, the building permit and, and renovation would comply with your new building standards as well. So I think all of those together protect the view shed from US 41.
And you are in agreement with the staff on that point, correct?
That's correct.
And then the next point is, the building and site design standards incorporate innovative techniques to address the project's visual impact on the 41 corridor.
Well, staff is recommending that for that, we do some landscape enhancements with their input as part of the local development order review process.
And do you agree with them that with those enhancements, that criteria will be met?
That's correct.
The next criteria is, address the balance between auto-oriented design and pedestrian access through enhanced design standards. In this case, that's a little challenging, because there are roads on three sides, and the property to the south is developed, but do you have an opinion as to whether or not that criteria is or can be met?
Well, in our discussion with staff, the, the basis for adding the sidewalks that I described that connect the US 41 sidewalk along Beaumont, both its east and west and north and south legs, was to enhance the pedestrian opportunity and to address that criteria.
And I'm going to skip number four and go to five. It's, will not be injurious to the neighborhood. Do you have an expert opinion about whether or not allowing this building to continue to be used for fast food would be injurious to the neighborhood?
In my opinion, it would not be injurious to the neighborhood.
Because the neighborhood, immediate neighborhood is commercial?
Other commercial uses, and, and I think we're making some enhancements to the site through the installation of sidewalks that, that benefit the public.
And let me ask you a question, if you know, or if I have to ask Mr. Trevilcock. Is US 41 a highly trafficked arterial road?
I'm not the traffic engineer, and I don't know the traffic counts, but I would say that it's probably the heaviest-traveled road through Benita Springs.
And due to the fact that this site is already configured, as noted, with roads on three sides, are there limited uses that can occur on this site that would be suitable from a planning perspective?
Well, I think there are limited uses. I mean, the site's about 1.2 acres, and keeping in mind that if you're trying to utilize and, and talk about sustainability, utilizing an existing facility that doesn't require us to go out and take a piece of virgin land and now extend infrastructure to it and create new parking lots and new access points and things of that nature, I think that this, this is consistent with that objective.
And the next criteria is that it will be compatible with existing or planned uses. In your expert opinion, is this compatible with the surrounding?
Yes, it is. I mean, the, the fact that we have commercial that's adjacent on north, south, and west, and immediately across US 41, I don't think there's anything incompatible with having the fast food restaurant use at that location.
And do you have an opinion as to whether or not this use would cause damage, hazard, or nuisance?
No, I don't, I, in my opinion, it would not cause any, anything addressing that criteria.
Will this use have any impact on environmentally critical areas or natural resources?
No, there is no impact on an environmentally critical area here.
The next criteria is consistency with Benita Plan, which I believe you and the staff are in agreement on that as well.
That's correct. It is consistent with the general commercial land use category.
And then the last one is, you have to meet all the other applicable criteria, which I'm assuming we'll do.
We will, and we'll demonstrate that compliance at the time of the local development order approval. And again, the only criteria that we've sought, I'd call it a deviation or variance, was from the 500-foot spatial separation in the event that you say that it, it is the applicable criteria that we have to get a, a variance from.
And when you evaluate all these criteria of compatibility, not impacting neighborhoods, providing for pedestrian interconnects, and balancing the auto-centric with pedestrian, when you've balanced all those together, are you aware of many other or other parcels where it's possible to do that and, and meet all these criteria? Or when you evaluate these considerable imbalance, is it your expert opinion that we're consistent with the special exception criteria?
I think when you look at it, the project as a whole, we are consistent with those criteria for both special exception criteria, the, the criteria that applies citywide and those criteria that apply on the US 41 overlay.
And on number four, if, if you don't want to do it on balance and, and do it as the consider and evaluate, that's why the variance is there, to address number four?
That's correct. I mean, again, if you say that the 500-foot spatial separation is a firm requirement and, and, and don't look at it as we did, which was one of the criteria, you evaluate the uses within 500 feet to help make your decision, then yes, the variance is the only mechanism we have, and we believe those extraordinary circumstances that I've outlined previously about the three-road frontages, the dedication of a frontage road, and reuse of an existing building designed for the use makes sense and meet those criteria.
Yeah, and you, and you made the point earlier that it's hard to make a distinction between why fast foods are concerned, but conventional restaurants aren't, because Outbacks and Carrabba's all have designated spaces for takeout people.
And I did mention that, too. I mean, the drive-through window is not your criteria that, that, because if you go back to the fast food restaurant, it says with or without a drive-through window, which means I could still have a pickup window and still be a standard restaurant. And that's why I would argue that the, the use of this for a fast food restaurant really isn't distinguishable from another form of a restaurant in that location.
I don't have any other questions.
I, I think that concluded my presentation.
We have Mr. Trevilcock here. If you have concerns about traffic, I believe that we agree with the staff. The staff points out that due to the existence of the turn lane, that there are no traffic concerns relative to this parcel. But if you need that reiterated, we're more than willing to put that testimony on, but we can rely on the staff position if you choose.
Does anyone on the board have any traffic issues?
No, but I have a site issue that I'd like to discuss with Mr. Arnold while you're, could, could you go back to the, your site plan?
Sure, just give me a moment. I think moved on to the staff presentation there.
Well, while you're here, I'm just going to ask this question, because I didn't see it covered in the staff write-up that we got.
I'm sorry, Mr. Worcester. I, I can't see you, so I can't hear you as well. What did, what was your question?
Well, I haven't, I haven't asked it yet.
Okay, that's why I can't hear it.
It's regard, that, thank you. That was good. All right, the, well, maybe you better go to your, your new plan, the engineering plan. Whoa, there, thank you. First item is, that existing site is, was put in place over 30 years ago, which had the standard, probably, obviously met the standards for going in, going in and being approved. It's certainly an unusual site where you've got four entrances and exits from it. If you look at the west entrance, if you come in and turn right, and whoops, there's no parking spaces left there, you have to turn around. There's no, except maneuvering around that dumpster, and it, it's highly unusual to have an entrance like that. Similarly, on the east side, you show that one as exit only, but you have four or five parking spaces on the south side. In order to get to those parking spaces, then you have to go through the fast food lane, because there's no, no way to get to them. Now, I assume that would be used for employee parking. They'd sneak in there in off-hours, and they avoid the, they, they use it as an entrance and park there. But it, it shows that it could, or is set up that it could be used for public parking, but if you get in there and it's full, you're landlocked and have to try to maneuver to turn around. Back in 80, I wasn't here in 1986. I was here, I was in Indiana, but the design requirements for, for moving traffic around a restaurant like that are different today than they would, were back 32 years ago. There's no loop around the south side where you can really get through if you get, get in a place where you can't park or easily turn around. You'd have to back up, and as we all know, that's very dangerous. Now, let's talk about stormwater for a second. There's one little area, it's right in the middle of the site, that's designated for stormwater detention. The stormwater requirements in 86 were probably considerably different as far as design standards than they are today, which might present some problems. Have you looked into that detention area, stormwater collection area being valid for today's standards? You're, you're, you're required to meet today's standards when you renovate an old building, in an old site. So, those, those are my two basic questions, the circulation and the water retention.
Well, with regard to traffic and general parking and circulation on the site, we've worked with your city engineer, one of our engineers in my office, and we've made some modifications really for handicap accessibility to the building itself. The parking requirements are satisfied with the plan you see. Sometimes we have not ideal arrangements, but with fast food restaurants, you'll note that many of them have pull-off because they have curbside delivery, or you're asked to park in a space so they can bring your order out if it took them longer to prepare. So, those spaces that you see that may not be for general public parking will be functional for the site itself. And with regard to water management, I'll let staff answer it, but I don't believe we've ever been asked to renovate and bring up to site standards for water management for essentially doing internal building renovations.
So you're saying you can, all your stormwater requirements in handling the stormwater in the site, do not have to meet current standards?
It's my understanding they do not.
That surprises me.
But I think if you look around Benita, we've got a lot of things that were built in the 1980s and earlier.
Two wrongs, two wrongs don't make a right.
They may not, but it's pretty extraordinary if you're going to ask somebody who's going in to get a building permit to put in new light fixtures to bring their entire site up to a current code. That's probably, I don't believe that's how the city has ever interpreted their rules.
Well, I believe if you're doing lights that are not standard, the city would require you to bring things to code with a reuse of a property.
Counsel, Mr. Rooney?
Yes.
Would you address Mr. Worcester's concern here?
It is my understanding that unless the applicant or, in, in this situation, any developer is changing the amount of impervious surface, that there wouldn't be any trigger to, to review storm, existing stormwater. So if, if, you know, we had a McDonald's yesterday, and it's changing to a Popeyes today, and they're, they're changing out the seating, and they're changing out the sign, that does not affect their existing stormwater permits if there is no change to the, to the actual impervious surface on the site? So if they were putting in additional parking, they were changing, they were adding asphalt that would affect stormwater, then yes, I believe that they would have to go back in and get another review. But I don't believe there's anything that would be triggered by a change in use.
Okay, let me ask you a question. If that building was torn down, and basically the same areas were impervious, they wouldn't have to meet the current standards?
I don't know if the building was torn down, because there would also be, there's runoff from the building that may change, even if the total impervious area had remained the same.
Okay.
Anything further?
I have a question.
Please.
Very simple question, I think, I hope, maybe not. How is the 500-foot measured? Do we know, is it spelled out anywhere? The 500-foot separation, is that measured? Does, does the fact that Beaumont is between that, is, does that count as the 500 feet? I assume it does, but is it measured from lot line to lot line, or from any point on the buildings that are part of the subject?
Mr. Fegan?
Mike Fegan, for the record. In this particular instance, the applicant is correct in that it does not specify a specific measuring technique. In other parts of the code, like they mentioned for consumption on premises, it does have a specific measuring technique that's mentioned. It is not mentioned in this particular case. What staff does typically in an instance like that is we in an instance like that is we take whatever the most restrictive measurement would be, which would be from, well, you can do from building to building, which is the most generous, or you can go from property to property, which is the most restrictive. In either case, they are within the 500 feet.
Thank you.
Which is why we've requested the variance.
Correct.
Anything?
I didn't hear that.
I said, which is why the variance has been requested.
Okay.
Is there anything further from the applicant?
Not at this time, sir. We do reserve the right for rebuttal.
Okay. I'll go ahead and swear and stand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And just for the record, I'll indicate that all the witnesses who testified previously were sworn.
And I guess really quick, before I get started, I have my presentations broken down as the rezoning, then the variance, then the special exception. If you want me to give three separate presentations as it's done, I can do that, or we could just talk about the points that staff and the applicant have issues with. It's your call.
Yeah, I, I mean, does anybody disagree? Let's talk about the areas of disagreement.
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that up here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll pull up the variance presentation then.
I have a question for you before you begin. Have you been in communication with your counsel, David Theriak, or his partner, Mr. Spain, with regard to this application?
Yes, yes, from the beginning. And in fact, Mr. Spain is on the phone with us today.
Great.
So, Mike Fegan, for the record, reviewing this application, actually, part of the reviewer was Theriak and Spain looking at this particular application. And as we know what the variance request is, it's from that certain section of the US 41 overlay code, more specifically a criteria four with regards to the 500-foot spatial separation to permit a fast food restaurant within 200 feet of a similar use. And this is where staff is recommending denial of this particular request. So, we know where it is, highlighted there, outlined in blue, is the site. The reason for the variance, which is pretty clear, and the applicant did a good job of laying out what the reason for the variance would be. It has to do with the fact that the property is within the US 41 overlay, and the overlay does have very specific special exception approval criteria, and it lists 10 criteria, one of those criteria being that there has to be exceptional or extraordinary conditions that exist which warrant the proposed use, including, but not limited to, demonstrated market demand and a minimum spatial separation of 500 feet from a similar use. So, that is the purpose of this particular application, is that they are within 500 feet of a similar use regardless of the measuring technique that was used, because the applicant is correct, it was not necessarily clear in the code which measuring technique to use. But either way, we sliced it, they are within 500 feet, so that is the reason for requesting the variance. The approval criteria for the board to consider with regards to the variance itself, exceptional or extraordinary conditions that are inherent to the property in question, are these conditions the result of the actions taken by the applicant? Is it the minimum variance necessary that will relieve the applicant of an unreasonable burden? Will the variance be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to the public welfare? And is this condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use for which the variance is sought, is it of a general or recurrent nature where it'd be more practical to just go ahead and amend the ordinance? So, those are the criteria for the variance review. As the applicant already laid out very well, the history of this property, it was owned BU-1A in 1975 by Lee County. That was the county's neighborhood commercial zoning district at the time, which later became C-1A, which is what the current zoning designation is of the property. And one of the conditions of approval in that '75 ordinance was to establish future plans for an access road to run parallel to US 41, which is constructed and which is, and which is used for the properties that abut that access road. The site itself was constructed in 1986 as Burger King. Burger King vacated it in 2006, so it's been 12 years since the Burger King has been there, and the site was remodeled as a Citibank in 2006 as well. The building is now vacant, and again, we have the application request to allow it to go back to fast food, which was the original use of the building.
Could I interrupt you with just a question? At what point did the building become vacant?
I believe the bank was only there for four years, so I think it's been vacant since 2010.
So, it was vacant when this ordinance was passed?
Correct.
2015, thank you.
Correct. So, again, just the measuring techniques that staff could have utilized to demonstrate that they are within 500 feet of several different restaurants, not just the Wendy's. You also have the Dunkin' Donuts, the McDonald's, and the KFC. All are within 500 feet of one another. The other portion of that criteria, though, was whether or not there was market demand for the use, and the applicant was able to provide proof that Bonita was underserved as far as this particular business was concerned, that the closest Popeyes would have been 22 miles away via automobile, and that's assuming I can drive in a straight line. It's probably a lot further with all the bobs and leaves and twists and turns. So, that, staff accepts that as part of the market demand study, that the area is underserved for that particular business itself. But all in all, what we have here in terms of our conclusions based on the variance criteria is that, yes, I think staff can acknowledge that the site was, is developed and that the original use was a fast food restaurant. The building, the parking, the drive-through lane, all those things are in place. But it is the staff opinion that these facts do not necessarily constitute an exceptional or extraordinary condition, that it is inherent to the property for the purposes of the variance review criteria. While fast food was the original use, it was also a bank. If the rezoning portion of this application is successful, there's another 38 uses that are applicable to the property.
Tell us some of those uses that the property could be used for.
Sure. So, of the 38 uses that the property would gain, 19 of them still would require a special exception, leaving you a use-by-right increase of 19 uses, which was laid out in the staff report. But some of those uses that could go there right now would be banks and financial establishments, of course, an animal clinic, contractors' offices, healthcare facility, what else? Religious facilities, research and development laboratories, used merchandise stores, what else do we got here? A broadcast studio, model display centers, and certain recreational facilities would be applicable to go there as well. Other uses that would be permitted under the CC, a zoning designation, but that would require a special exception, would be uses such as auto parts stores, flea markets, nightclubs, vehicle and equipment dealers, and of course, fast food restaurants. But there is a use-by-right increase of 19 uses.
Could I ask you another question? If this were not changed to CC and remain C-1A, are there uses that, for this property, that are appropriate for this property under C-1A as well, that they would keep if they didn't get the zoning change?
From the staff perspective, sure.
Okay.
You know, and I think one of the things the staff would reference is the fact that modifications have already taken place once to the site to accommodate a bank.
So, the only reason for changing to the CC category would be to include fast foods as something that can be built there, is that correct?
Correct. The way our code is written and the way our code reads is that if I look at the use table, and if it's not permitted, it's not permitted. There's no need to take it any further than that. And in the C-1A zoning designation, fast food is no longer a permitted use.
When was that taken out of C-1A, fast food?
That I do not know. I do not know. It was, I know it was a change that was made by Lee County prior to our incorporation. But in terms of the history and the rationale, I was unsuccessful in trying to find out the answer to that particular question. I did ask.
So, that in 2015, when this overlay was passed, this was not allowed on that property to be a fast food?
Correct.
And it was, had not been a fast food restaurant since 2006?
Correct.
All right, thanks.
That is correct, yes. And as far as the other criteria with regards to the hardship, yes, you know, staff essentially feels that the hardship criteria is not successfully met in that it's a use that requires a special exception, followed by a variance from that special exception criteria, and that is taken as the result of the applicant who is desiring this specific use on site. Now, what we do agree is that should the variance be approved, yes, it would be the minimum necessary. There are no planned building expansions that the applicant is proposing at this time that would change the distance between a neighboring fast food restaurant. Staff does not object to that. It would not be injurious to the neighborhood. I think the applicant did a fine job of showing the distances from neighborhoods, and the fact that the fast food use is prevalent in the surrounding area should absolutely be taken into consideration. And while the 500-foot separation may be problematic in the future for some questions that the applicant raised, it hasn't been of a recurrent nature in this particular instance that would force the city to just go ahead and amend this particular ordinance instead. Whether or not this is considered an unintended consequence or solidifying the measuring criteria should be explored are not decisions for staff to make. These are council and policy decisions staff has to review based on the code as it's currently written. So, while we do largely agree with the applicant in almost all of the areas, because the staff opinion that the variance criteria is not completely met, and as a result, the special exception criteria is not completely met, although 9.5 out of 10 are met, it needs to be 10 out of 10. And the staff rationale for that is that that section in the US 41 overlay is labeled approval criteria, not consideration. It's approval criteria. These are the approval criteria, and it can't meet all 10. So, for that reason, staff had to recommend denial. But again, to the applicant's point, you know, yes, they did work very hard on this application, of course, to meet the other applicable standards of the US 41 overlay, such as additional sidewalks, crosswalks, making it more pedestrian-friendly, agreeing to revamp the outdoor area for an outdoor seating area. All positive changes to the property for sure, and staff does not disagree or contest those changes. But with the code the way it's written, staff is providing you the recommendation that is required.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
I'm sorry to be so questiony, but there are a lot of things I was unclear about. If this, if we interpret this law to be, as you have interpreted, that this is, these are requirements and they can't be met, is there any reason, then, for consideration of a zoning change? And could we consider a zoning change if we didn't know what the proposal was? If this one we don't accept, how can we, how can we review a zoning change without a proposal?
I did speak with Brent Spain, the counsel for staff, about this, and essentially what we have to do is we have to compartmentalize. Because we know what the end use is, if the property can meet the criteria for the rezone, a sense the rezone should be considered to be granted. And it can meet all of those criteria. So, even though we do know what the end use is and what they're wanting to do, they can still meet all of the criteria of a conventional rezone, which is why staff recommended approval.
The question I was asking, thank you.
Do you have anything further?
I could keep going, but I think, I think, I think we
We get it.
Hit the point.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Please.
Thank you. Mike, in light of the fact there's been some question about what could happen on the property now, if I read it correctly, and I didn't go through exhaustively, in C-1A, I could have a boat parts store, a humane society control center, a bait and tackle store, boat rental, cleaning services, community group home, contractors and builders, daycare, duplex, EMS. Is that correct?
If that's what the code says, sure.
Okay. I, I need a little bit of help because when I listen to your testimony, I think it all comes down to one point. And I'm not sure I completely get that one point. So, can you go back to... There we go, that one. I looked up, as you know from my testimony, the definition of extraordinary circumstance in Black's Law Dictionary. What definition did you rely on?
I used the Planner's Dictionary, and I also consulted with Brent Spain, the city attorney.
Okay. I looked up the Illustrated Book of Development definitions, and I didn't find it in there. So, what's the name of the Planner's Dictionary that you used?
I think it's just called the APA Planner's Dictionary, is what I think it was called.
Do you recall how, what the definition was, off the top of your head?
I don't. Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
What edition of Black's Law Dictionary did you use?
I didn't write down the edition, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It's the one on my shelf I took out. It's probably older than I'd like to think. But it says, in your opinion, the second bullet point, I think, is the key. The facts don't constitute exceptional or extraordinary circumstances inherent in property for the purpose because it's self-created due to the fact that we requested a special exception followed by a variance. So, in that third bullet point, if I understand it correctly, anyone who asks to ask for a special exception and a variance would never meet the criteria?
No. The fact that the hardship that was created was the use that is on the special exception list and then not being able to meet the approval criteria of 500 feet is the result of the applicant requesting a use that has that requirement, which doesn't apply to all uses in the C-1A or the CC. It's a specific list.
So, I guess I'm still confused. So, anytime I would request a special exception and then I would have to ask for a variance from one of those criteria, in your opinion, is self-created?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mike, a question for you. I noticed somewhere in here that there was a neighborhood meeting.
There was.
Could you, could someone tell us what the results of that?
We all, myself, Neil, Wayne, the applicant, we attended the neighborhood meeting, and we were the only ones. No one showed up.
And we waited 15 minutes.
How sad.
It wasn't, it wasn't a very contested case as far as the neighborhood was concerned.
Have there been any responses out of the advertising from any of the butters?
I do, I did have a couple of responses of people curious. I did not receive any letters of support, but I did not receive any letters of opposition either.
Thank you.
But they did offer Wayne to go to the potluck dinner, but not Mike and I.
That's true.
Thank you.
Is there any rebuttal?
Yes.
And we do have Brent Spain on the phone as well, if anybody has any questions for Brent.
Yeah, I would just ask to see if Mr. Spain has any comments before we go to rebuttal.
Good morning, council. I'm pleased to appear by phone. I'm battling the flu, so I apologize for not being able to be there in person. The one issue I wanted to address was one of the council members asked about whether the rezoning needs to be approved automatically. I just wanted to state what the standard is for that rezoning. Is that the applicant has the burden of proving that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with all requirements of the city's land development code. If the applicant meets that burden, then the burden shifts to the city to demonstrate that maintaining the existing commercial zoning classification with respect to the property accomplishes a legitimate public purpose. So, this case is a little unique. It's difficult, to a certain extent, to separate the proposed use from the rezoning because the only reason they're seeking the rezoning is to add that particular proposed use. But if the board feels and that the city has met its burden of demonstrating that maintaining the existing zoning classification accomplishes a legitimate public purpose, then the board would be within its discretion would be within its discretion to deny the rezoning.
And I would just add, this is Derek Rooney. I just had that, I conferred with staff, there is no testimony by staff that the existing zoning classification should be kept. So there's, there's nothing on the record indicating, you know, opposition to the rezoning request.
Is there anything further from Mr. Spain?
Can I ask one more?
Yes, one other point I'd like to add, council, is there was an issue about which special exception criteria to utilize in this case. And I would just point out that as a matter of statutory interpretation, if there's a specific statute, or in this case, a specific provision in an ordinance, that always governs over the more general provision. So the suggestion that the 41 overlay special exception approval criteria don't necessarily need to be met, I would respectfully disagree with that. I would also echo what's already been mentioned, is that that subsection in the overlay is titled "approval criteria." It does say that the following criteria will be utilized to evaluate the special exception request. And if you go through those criteria, the applicant's suggestion that they're just things you consider, but we don't need to meet them, well, if you take that argument at face value, one of the things you could disregard is number six, is compatibility with surrounding uses. And I don't think the board would conclude that it can disregard compatibility. The other thing I would note is in Section 4-889, subsection B, the code is abundantly clear, and it says, quote, "Provisions of this decision shall apply to all development and redevelopment located within the geographical boundaries," that's worth in Exhibit 4. So there's, there's no question that those special exception review criteria apply to this site, because the property is within the boundaries of the US-41 overlay districts.
Can I ask just one question for clarification in my own head? If we were to go ahead and approve the zoning classification change, knowing that that includes the possibility of building a fast food place here on this property, does that give any gloss of our approval to that being done? Or would anytime they wanted to do that, if we stick to the rest of this, they have to come back and get a special variance in order to be able to do it?
I'll answer that, no.
No, okay. That's just...
Okay.
Proceed.
I'm going to recall Mr. Arnold, but before I do that, I just want to point out that we didn't say this quite, you don't, you look at both lists. I agree with Mr. Rooney, who agreed with me, you've got to look at both lists. I would submit that the caption that gets added in later is not controlling, you have to look at the actual language of the, of the text. I do agree with Mr. Rooney that there's absolutely no evidence saying this property shouldn't be rezoned. All the competent substantial evidence supports the rezoning. And I will answer your question. What happened is, 1962 zoning regulations play, I actually still have an old copy of, were the regulations that were in control when the property was rezoned in 1975. They don't look anything like today's regulations. So you had these old districts that have lots of uses, and uses that we wouldn't even necessarily know what they are today. You kind of go, what is that? So what happened was, and they had them in lots of different places, so what the county did was converted them, like from BU to C-1, BU-1A to C-1A, and then said, you can't rezone into these categories anymore. We don't, we don't really want to use those categories. If you have them, you can keep them. And over time, they whittled down the uses. Now, what happened with restaurants was, as I indicated earlier, it just said restaurants. And it wasn't until the county came up with use groups, which the city now uses, that they made a distinction between Group 1, Group 2, Group 3, Group 4, which are like dinner theaters and fast food. So when they came up with those distinctions, that's when we started to treat fast food differently than just restaurants. So it's one of those things, as it has evolved over time, and we adopt more criteria, that's how that happened. Call Mr. Arnold. Mr. Arnold, let me ask you a question before you add anything. When you look at some of the uses that I mentioned, that you could have, such as boat parts stores, cleaning services, EMS facility, in your opinion, when you look at the purpose and intent of the regulations, do they do a better job of maintaining and enhancing the aesthetic quality of the corridor? I mean, I'm thinking boat parts stores, that everybody complains about the boat parts store and the boat facility north of Beach Road. Is that more aesthetically pleasing?
Well, I think that goes to my point, and I don't think it guarantees that they're more aesthetically pleasing. And some uses that define outdoor storage components, whether they're for vehicles or boats or other incidental uses, like a contractor office, I think Mr. Fegan testified was also a permitted use, probably isn't more aesthetically pleasing for the corridor than the proposed fast food restaurant use.
And I noted that, you agree with Mr. Fegan, that there's 19 uses in the list of uses that would have to go through this thing, special exception process?
I didn't check his math, but I do agree that there are multiple uses that are specified in the corridor overlay that do require special exception.
Well, when I look at some of those uses that don't require a special exception, like a duplex, single-family home, or a group home, in your opinion, given that there's roads on three sides, are those reasonable uses of the property?
I would think none of those uses would be defined as the highest and best use for the site, for a variety of reasons, including, single-family and duplex are not permitted under your general commercial land use category, and a group home is more of a residential use that I probably don't find on a heavily traveled highway.
So when you look at the standard zoning district and the list of permitted uses, not all of them are really permitted when you look at the general commercial land use category, is that correct?
No, they're not.
Do you have an opinion about bullet number three, where it submits that if you ask for a special exception and a variance, that automatically is not an extraordinary circumstance?
No, I disagree. And I think part of my testimony was simply that you have to look at the facts and the uniqueness of each property. And I think that you're not going to find another one that meets this criteria. And without a path forward, because I agree with sort of what you implied, Neil, and that is that if I have to ask for the special exception use, and then I have to ask for a variance from the criteria, then I never can meet that test, because I've self-imposed my own hardship because I've asked for that use. And I don't believe that's how your code was intended to be applied. And I, you know, just to address Mr. Spain's point, I think that, you know, when we sat down and talked about this, the reason we thought the path forward was this, it's not because you don't apply the criteria like you would compatibility, but it's a factor for approval. You look at it, if I was incompatible, I'm pretty certain you wouldn't allow me to move forward. But the fact that I am compatible, but the extraordinary circumstance of being within 500 feet is what I'm asking for the deviation from. And when I look at that whole paragraph, I mean, it says "including but not limited to." I think that gives you the breadth to take that and apply it as you will. And maybe you don't want to be the policymaker in this case, but I do think it allows you to have an avenue of having a use within 500 feet without seeking a variance.
I'm a little confused about that. It says "included but not limited to." That would seem to me to imply that we could take other issues into consideration, but not that we could ignore those that were upon the page.
I think that, well, I'll let Neil answer, as the attorneys, but, you know, I've written a lot of codes in my day, because I used to work for local government as well. And when you include the phrase "including but not limited to," means that, you're not limiting yourself to those criteria.
Let me go back to a really basic point, or basic to me, and I think it gets lost, is when we deal with whether this is expansion or strip commercial, or, and we keep talking about this like we're potentially opening up a corridor or a new use. Did I understand you correctly, this isn't something new, this is essentially a remodeling of an existing building, an existing site?
That's correct. The intent is to remodel the existing building to reestablish the fast food use.
And when I look at that list of permitted uses, other than a bank, which is no longer wants to be here, is there another reasonable use of that building and that site as it's designed, other than a fast food restaurant, or a regular restaurant?
Well, I think not. And I say that only because, you know, you're looking at a definitive size, it's the perfect size for what these restaurants want to be. It has the drive-through lane, it has a drive-up window, it has parking configuration for that use. So yes, it wants to be a restaurant use.
Any other questions?
Is there anything further from the applicant?
No, sir.
Anything for, before you begin, Mr. Rooney?
Okay.
Can we take a 10-minute break here? Would that be all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll come back here at 10:51.